All right. This is on, this is on. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our Board of Ed work session for September 14th. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. It's a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Fred, for everyone here joining us and anyone joining us online. If I could just remind everyone, please put your phones on mute or silent so we don't have any interruptions. We will go to our agenda and the first item of business is comments from the public on agenda items only. So if anyone would like to speak on an item on the agenda, please come up, state your name. Let us know who you are. Okay, don't see anybody going once, going twice. Okay. What everyone's looking forward to superintendent's report on the opening of school.
President Catania, I had no idea that everybody was waiting excitedly to hear this. So that's good. That's good. So I have, I'm delighted to report that the school year got off, I think, to a fantastic start. I have to really thank everyone in this district who worked so hard to make it possible. The amount of, you know, the amount of time you have to really do a complete refresh of your facilities, your technology, and do a deep cleaning and do maintenance and roof repairs and all the things that need to be done in a very tight window with materials lags that are out there and labor shortages that are out there. It is really quite a feat and it's always on a very tight timeline and it never fails. And the first day of school rolls around, when people walk in that front door, this place looks amazing. It is amazing and everybody's ready and they're prepared. And, you know, it's, it always, it never ceases to amaze me how, how many people really contribute in quiet, but very important ways to make, to make sure that that happens. And it's a variety of different ways, whether it's a support staff member, custodian, technology worker, teacher, you know, board member administrator, you name it, everybody's working hard to prepare. So I just can't thank everybody enough for the, again, the extra flexibility and planning that was required this year to try to, you know, catch our breath a little bit and be refreshed enough to have a successful year after the year and a half we've had. And also to be, to be ready and to be prepared. And as you saw in the last meeting, we had a lot of, you know, new hiring to do. And so these are all things that have set us up to have a great school year and we're excited about that. So our buildings are ready. You see some, some different things. You probably see some tents around our new, around our elementary schools. We did rent a series of COVID compliant tents that have provided outdoor shade and swing space for us to be able to do all kinds of things outdoors, at least in the, for the next couple of three months. We've had some great picnics and great events at the schools and just a lot of celebration. And I want to thank our PTAs. I want to thank, you know, all of our parents for really trying to do everything they can to support the reopening of school. The fact that we're back, you know, five days a week, full time as normal as possible is really, really exciting. So thanks to everybody who's contributed to that. Our transportation routes, the first day is within the opening day, you sometimes have a glitch or two. And in the transportation area, we did have one or two that I think is pretty typical where, you know, it takes time to establish a routine and the route starts to flow. And I think you're seeing some of that occur. At some of our schools where it's a very tight site, we do tend to see, you know, traffic patterns take, you know, back up a little bit. You'll see that at some different places. Waverly is one that we know has narrow streets, a lot of traffic. What we're trying to figure out is the relationship between now that we have the ability to put more students on buses, what is the ability to have people more take advantage of that, perhaps reduce the automotive traffic a little bit and, and help that area out. I will mention that, you know, we have some options where we've used rented parking lots and things around the school there. We did not start the year to do that because it's a costly endeavor. But if it's something that we need to consider, it's something we can explore. We just want to see what the real patterns will be before we make any, any kind of decisions on that. So I'm also excited that we have before and aftercare started now, thanks to our partnership with the Y, which was really the brainchild of Assistant Superintendent Lisa San Filippo, who, who made that happen and who brokered that agreement along with others on our team. Really worked hard on that and brought that to each of our schools. That seems to be going very, very well. And we're excited about that partnership. So you may notice that you may be curious about what our, what our COVID levels have been. When we first started out on the first day, believe it or not, we did have some quarantines that had nothing to do with us. In fact, all the cases that we're aware of really don't have anything to do with the schools. They come into the schools from other places, whether they're COVID positive cases or whether they're quarantines in, at least in the beginning of the, of the year. We have had some quarantines and we have had some positive cases. So far, the most accurate numbers we have as of the end of the day today is we have nine individuals who have reported positive over the total, total cumulative course. Some of those may have returned, but they started out and, you know, we have nine across the K-12 grades. We have 18 who are quarantined. We had one incident that had a number like about six, I think, that was part of that. That was just one lunchtime incident at one of our schools. And we've, you know, looked at how we can space a little more to see if we could have reduced that. And, but nonetheless, we know that, that some of these things would be expected. We're going to continue to monitor this and and, you know, go from there. So I wanted to give you those numbers. The question comes up about what happens with students per our plan. One of the things we've been working on, what happens if a student is quarantined? How are we meeting their needs? Well, right now we're doing it through tutoring, through the tutoring provision that we have at K-12. But we think that if the numbers, you know, would stay where they are or increase, the better way to do that would be to, to seek some other more permanent arrangements for meeting, helping students progress through the curriculum. And we're getting close to the finalization of, of an agreement with our, with the Eastchester Teachers Association. We've been talking now for several weeks and really just kind of working through some of the finer points of the details. But what we're looking at is being able to provide at the elementary levels, a dedicated teacher to tutor students as needed, who may be quarantined in, in small groups or as individuals. So we'll have that dedicated service. We feel that educationally, that's a good way to go for the young ones rather than a passive streaming situation. More personal attention to the teacher, to the students' needs and the curriculum. At the secondary level, because of the broad spectrum of levels and the broad spectrum of subject areas of depth and specializations and electives, it's impossible to be able to always be dependent, being able to cover through teacher tutoring what you might need to help a student get through the curriculum. So we'll be having passive streaming as an option potentially there for grades six through 12. When I say passive streaming, what I'm talking about is not the engagement. It's because for the sake of the students who are in the classroom, we're trying to have the most normal experience as possible. But for the one student or maybe two who would be quarantined, they would have the benefit of having the camera turned on so that they can observe, you know, the, the lesson and during that lesson portion can get what they need. And in addition, they would get the work, you know, sent home through either electronic means or in paper if they prefer or however it works out best for the assignment. So that is how that's going to be handled going forward. And we're in the process of making that, that arrangement more, launching that arrangement. We're also going to be starting here in the next couple of weeks, probably two, three weeks now, gateway testing. We're a partnership with Mount Sinai Hospital. We are about to send, you should expect this week, parents, you're going to get a, an opt-in form, an authorization form. It will allow you to participate in gateway testing. The idea of the gateway testing is we would hopefully test everyone, everyone, one time in the beginning and then thereafter, 20% of the faculty and staff, excuse me, the, the students and staff who are not vaccinated, we would do that testing over, over every week for about 20, 20% per week. The, the test is a drop-off and pickup. So what it looks like right now is we would have a designated day where a test kit would be given to the student to take home. Student would take the kit home. This is a PCR test. It is not a pool test. It is an individual PCR test. Would go home with the student. Student would take it home in the morning before they eat anything would expectorate into the, into the tube, would take that, collect that sample. And then that would be brought back to school at a drop-off location. This is all done secure with secure information, barcoding, so that all of the individual identification is not associated visibly with the sample. And then that sample is couriered and tested and within about 24 hours, you would have a result. And anyone who is positive would be notified. So this is a testing program that is going to be a little bit of an undertaking, but the first step is, first of all, people need to think about this, that we had no, as a result of our testing last year, we had no positive cases discovered through the surveillance testing we did last year, which was a smaller sample size, Branson. But it's, it's just helpful to know, right? Everybody's have that random sampling to make sure that we're catching any positive cases as early as we possibly can. And so this testing protocol will be starting here, you know, within the next three weeks or so. But you will soon be getting that authorization. And I urge and ask, you know, families to really consider participating in this because it is one of the components that helps keep us as safe as possible. Some other things that went on, of course, this weekend, we had the opening of football season and we've had some great athletic events going on now in the fall season and we had a great heartfelt, united tribute and remembrance of the events of nine, nine 11 that was put together by our coaches and who honored those who have, who risked so much to save so many. And we appreciate their service and we appreciate all that has been done throughout the years and all that individuals have endured. There was just a nice recognition of that on Saturday and a really good spirit. We also have our new security coordinator onsite, John Kubler, who has toured all the sites and I've spent a lot of time onboarding him, walking through the district with him. And he's really building some great relationships and is really doing a nice job overseeing all of our security personnel, including our guards that are, we've had our security guards who are new. And we're really seeing this, this effort come together and we are thankful to have John here with us on a halftime basis. You have just received this evening a new newsletter that is a brand new format by Jackie Saviano, our new communication specialist. And so take a look at that. It's in your email and you'll, if you're on our mailing list, which I think just about everybody is, you'll be able to get, you'll be able to take a look at that. This has got some video embedded in it, some video from Saturday's, Saturday's tribute that I mentioned. It's got some video and I have an opening message there and video for you to see. And it's a nice dynamic new format. You will get it every Tuesday. You will get this newsletter now. I would like your feedback on it. Jackie would like your feedback on it. I'm really pleased with how the first inaugural edition is shaping up. And then you'll also get on Fridays, your regular kind of news and notes. So you'll know the different events that are happening. So you'll get two key communications from the district every week. And so keep an eye out for, for those and let us know how those are working for you. Later in today's meeting, we're going to talk a little bit about the process for filling the Board of Education seat. That's going to be very important. So we'll talk about that a little bit later in the agenda. And coming up next week, we have the beginning of our open houses. We have three open houses, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday at each of our elementaries, one at each of our elementaries next week. And I believe it goes Waverly on Tuesday night and Greenville on Wednesday night and Anhutch on Thursday night. These events are going to be held in person. Our board has a goal to try to, to have the most normal pre-COVID start we can safely possibly have. And as part of that general direction that the board has provided, as, as the administration tries to look toward how we do that, we realize that at least at the elementary levels, by making some modifications, we feel we can do that safely. We are, you, you will be getting some communication on Friday as to the specifics of that, but I will let you know that there are some key components across all three buildings that you'll want to be aware of. And in order to be able to have this as an in-person event, we have to be able to have six feet of distance between the adults because the distance that they recommend for children is about three feet. The distance that they want you to have as an adult is about six feet. So in order to get six feet in a classroom, it means you can have half of the classroom there. You can have about a dozen people and still get that six feet. So it will be limiting it to one parent per child to the event and we will be splitting it in half so that you will have half of the class in one session of about 30 minutes and then the other half in another session of about 30 minutes. And so we'll need that shift change to go smoothly. At the secondary level, it's just not possible to do it in person because of the number of people and the format of the event and the sheer scale of it, to be able to guarantee enough physical distancing to do that. But we are excited about the, the ability to have parents for the first time in a long time come into the school, see their child's classroom, get familiar in live, you know, have, have a few minutes in that experience and in that moment to understand what their children are experiencing, just a little bit in terms of the space of the place and a little bit about the curriculum. And then, you know, then, then to be able to do a shift change and have the next group come in. So we are going to be doing that this year. And I want to just highlight a couple of questions I had from board members this week that I thought might be good for everybody to, to, to be aware of. Our board members will all work very hard and ask really good questions. And particularly at the start of the school year with so many things that are revolving due to all the COVID protocols, it's sometimes good to, you sometimes get more questions at this time of the year. So we had some really good questions about what can our students eat outside on a nice day? It's, you know, for lunch. And the answer is yes, at the elementaries, we try to get them all out to eat. That's a big strategy for getting the distance and getting the fresh air. We do that. That's why we have the tents. And then at the middle school, we're fortunate to have six feet of distance, thanks to the hard work of our team there, who figured out how we could have everybody use every, every bit of space and get the six feet of distance across the board. So the question is, can they go outside for lunch? Yes, students have always been able to kind of go outside and have a picnic lunch on a, on a kind of as needed, as requested, you know, basis. But in terms of doing that at scale, it has not been something that we've done at scale. But certainly, you know, we, we like to provide flexibility and options for individuals who'd like to, to do that. And at the high school, we have open campus for our two older grades and they are certainly free to exit the campus. And they have quite a bit of, of latitude at that, at that grade level at lunch. You know, we were talking about some of our fields. I've got, I've got some questions that citizens gave to our board members about the condition of our fields. And, and listen, we've got one of our board goals this year is to look at our facilities all around. Like we've got, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Like our facility is just a beautiful room, right? This room looks beautiful. This is a new addition. You've got state of the art HVAC in here. You've got beautiful lighting. You've got beautiful finishes. You've got, you know, ADA compliant ramps. You've got everything here you need, right? But many of our buildings were constructed in the twenties and the fifties. You know, they've been here a while. And over the, over time, these buildings start to require more maintenance. And that applies to our fields too. Our fields, you know, it's not just a matter of are they mowed and are they kept? If you walk on them, you notice they're not always very even. You'll notice that some of the baseball fields, you know, are have, need some refreshing that requires some investment that goes beyond just maintenance. So had some good questions about what can be done there. We've had a great public-private partnership with, a great partnership, I should say, on our baseball field where, where materials were purchased and labor was donated in exchange for being able to use that field. This board approved that. We've done the same thing now at Anhutch. So that is something that we'll continue to move forward on. And, you know, we just need to get that, get that done and we have to fit that into the overall scope of work that we have to do. But that's really just a part of it. So I think our facilities committee, right? I think our, our facilities and safety committee really has an opportunity to take a look at some of the things regarding fields or take a look at some of the things regarding our, our building conditions survey that we've, that Lisa San Filippo and Ed Tier have done in conjunction with our construction management company, really look at what has to be done. And it's just to get us a plan to, to move forward on some of those things by one mean, by any reasonable means. There's some good questions about, hey, how does a speech teacher do speech with masks? Like, you know, is it possible to do that? And what are some of the limitations? And so there's been some good discussions with, with myself and Dr. Urso and some discussions with her staff and some of the, some of the speech therapists about that. And just making sure that we look at what are some of the best ways around that. There's definitely some ways that you can, you know, clear masks and there are ways to get distance and there are shields that can be used in different spaces. So, so in their professional judgment, we know that our, our speech therapists really are doing everything they can to deliver services that are effective for our students, even in adverse conditions. And just having that conversation and being able to have that question raised and answer that question, I think is really, really valuable. And then there's one item that I thought was a good one because sometimes, you know, we work in this role every day and we know our jobs and our roles, but as, as community members or board members, you know, may have questions that we take for granted. One of the questions I think that was raised this week was, can you tell me more just about the employee? Like how you hire, how you, how you train, how you evaluate, you know, and all of those kinds of things. How do you make sure you get, you know, great candidates and you have a good pipeline and all these good questions, right? So I think that's an area for more discussion, more exploration, where we can definitely walk people through that. Either in, you know, private sessions during the week or maybe at a session like this where we prepare a session where we could talk about it in some more depth and study it. I think it's an area I'm extremely proud of in this district. I think we do a really good job with it. And I would love people to understand more about how we do that and, and what that, that highly evolved system looks like here. Lastly, I'm going to just, so I just want to thank our board members for bringing up some other questions. I wanted to just touch on a few of them and also wanted to, some of the answers and then also wanted to remind everybody that we will be having a new board format, kind of going back to the old board format that we had previous to COVID. As part of this mission to move forward into the most, I'll call it normal pre-COVID experience that we, that we can. Part of that's having our board meetings go back to a style that worked well for us then, which will involve moving them back to the library and out of this space and ceasing to zoom them, but continuing to stream them. Because these Zoom features are not, they're not working well in terms of the ability to hear. And so, you know, board members later on down in the agenda may want to talk a little bit more about, about that. But I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that our next board meeting will be back in the library. That'll be on the 28th, 28th of this month, back in the library televised as it, you know, typically has and streamed as it typically has been in the past. So, and then, you know, I think it's important to just let people know about. So that concludes my report. I know it was lengthy, but the beginning of the year, there is a lot going on. I could have kept talking for another half an hour, but we have other things to do. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Glass. Does anybody have any? Sorry, that, that's why we don't want to do Zoom anymore. Thank you, Dr. Glass. Does anybody have any questions on his report? Yes, sure. Unmute yourself.
I just a couple of questions. Thank you for all that information. So I was wondering this year, if there is any process for notifying community about positive cases and quarantines at school since that was done last year. But I know changes have been made. So what is, if any, what is that process?
Yes, I understand that that is no longer required, but I think it is helpful. So we're considering a dashboard instead of the constant notifications that we did. I, I, but I'm open to, you know, any feedback. So am I, am I correct on that, Dr. Urso? That, that is not necessarily a requirement. It is a recommendation to notify, but what is done is no longer specified.
The dashboard will be up on the website and if people wanted to, you know, look at the numbers, they can go onto the website and view our dashboard, which is updated every day.
Thank you. My other, I just wanted to make sure I understood the process for gateway testing. So I'm going to repeat back what, what I think I understood you to say. Just correct me if I'm wrong. So you are going to ask for authorization from families and the first round of testing will be all students and staff, right? Unvaccinated and vaccinated who have given authorization.
I believe, yes, that is my, my, so with staff, it may be a little bit different and kind of have to still unwind some of that. With students, it's all of those who have given consent. We cannot compel, you know, a student to do that. Staff, the way that it is, the way the regulation is written are exempt from testing, I believe. I'm trying to like think of the language. It's sort of a backward language. There's, you're, you're exempt from the vaccination if you test is the way I believe it works. So definitely every unvaccinated staff member will have to be tested every week. In terms of the gateway, I'm not sure now with this law that's come in since the gateway was announced, quite how that interfaces. You know, if that's a, if that's a voluntary or mandated. I, I, I really can't be sure about that yet.
Just to clarify then, for students, you're going to do weekly testing of 20% of students who have given consent. And that includes vaccinated and unvaccinated students have given consent, correct? Population. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. I had one other question. Oh, so I just wanted, you know, when you were talking about the masks for, for speech therapy, you used a phrase, something like, you know, we want to go back to as normal as possible, even in adverse conditions. And I think that we're not in, in optimal conditions, but I want to applaud everyone who has gotten the students back to school five full days a week. This is a huge undertaking. And for me, that is the ultimate priority is that the students are back in school, students and staff safely full five days a week. That's like the normal, right? That's the benchmark for me. And so I just really wanted to applaud everyone who has made that happen. I, I'm so, you know, I know that many, many districts in Westchester are not doing in-person open houses. So I also just wanted to acknowledge what I imagine is a great deal of hard work and commitment going into that on the part of the, the building principals, the entire district and the teachers. And so thank you for the extraordinary effort to make sure we keep the staff and everyone, you know, safe and comfortable during that process. Can you clarify if there will be online open houses at the middle school and high school as there was, as there were last year?
As of my discussions with the secondary principals yesterday, they were working out the details of that. So in some cases, whether they will be synchronous or asynchronous is sort of a question and they were trying to align if they could. But they definitely will be online and they, you know, in that, in that respect. May I elaborate a little bit more on the elementary, some of the, some things that parents can help us with, with regard to the elementary? I think one of the, one of the concerns frankly is, I mean, these masks we wear, we all know are a very controversial item in, in the world today, can be. And so I think it's, it's going to be very important and I will send out in the announcement, some very clear language we are going to absolutely require. If we're going to be having, you know, an in-person open house, that every, without exception, you know, every, every adult and every person who enters the building will have to be masked appropriately and fully. And we, you know, we can't have any sloppy masking, right? It's going to be important for everybody's safety and security. And we, we, you know, that cannot be contested, that cannot be challenged. And we will, we will ensure that we enforce that very stringently for the benefit of all. I only say that because, you know, I've seen things on social media, even in recent days, where people are, you know, getting involved in this debate and, and it's not just out there. It's, it's in our community as well. And so that comes into the schools and we will not be able to have these events. We just can't have that coming into the schools. We have to be there for our kids. We have to be there for, for their learning. We have to be there for our teachers so they can do their job and meet the needs of the parents without having to worry about enforcing something that really doesn't affect them directly. And it can happen. And I wanted to acknowledge it and I'm going to need our families, you know, regardless of how passionately anyone may feel about this, to fully go in and comply with this and help us with that. So we can have a really successful and safe experience. And help us with that so we can have a really successful and safe experience.
I just a quick follow-up question about that. So I'm assuming this means because teachers will be spending their time preparing for the in-person open house to do it in two shifts and a shortened and different kind of format, that there will not be any online version of the open house at the elementary levels?
There will have. And, and parents will need to make provisions to have someone attend. Because there will not be online makeup versions. It's, it is live and you have to be there to receive it. If there are materials provided, you know, that we can email or that are easy to just, you know, give to people like we normally would. Sure, we can do that. But I know it may be tempting to say, well, I'm not comfortable to come. And therefore I want to create a separate makeup session, you know, just for my, for my family. We, we will not be doing that. Absolutely not. We'll make that clear in the beginning. So people have to choose. You know, this is one of those things where we can't, we can't put our teachers in the middle and ask them to do both. We are, we're making a commitment to do one. We want to do that well and need people to to make their decision as to whether they can participate in that. And then the best we'll be able to do is provide materials. We will not be streaming in those nights.
Hi, I just want to follow up on the field situation at Ann Hutch. I was there. I was there this weekend for soccer. And the grass was very, very high. And the back of the field has rocks and those dirt patches and weeds have grown on top of the dirt patches. And I'm not talking about like little weeds, like they are really high. Um, I, I actually took some pictures because I wanted to show you all. And I know that I happen to be at Ann Hutch Fields a lot, but I know some of you are not. And just wanted to show you what I'm talking about. I'm just gonna pass those around. So I'm concerned about the safety for the students because I know that a lot of the students are out there for recess. And, and they play on that field and there are rocks, there are, there's this forest of weeds and I'm afraid that someone could get hurt during recess or also on the weekend when kids are there for soccer. It honestly looks terrible. And it's embarrassing, frankly. There was soccer there this weekend on Saturday and Sunday. And obviously we have kids from our district, but we have kids from Tuckahoe and from Bronxville as well. And the grass was so high that the kids were having trouble playing soccer because the ball was moving slowly and getting caught in the grass. And coaches and parents were getting very upset and complaining like, why hasn't the grass been mowed? So one issue that we have is the ongoing maintenance of that field. And, and I'm questioning how often is that grass being mowed? Clearly not enough. And also what's the update with the rocks and the weeds in the back? Because I do think that that's a safety issue. The other thing is that there was an MOA agreement between the district and Eastchester Little League that was dated in May. And was approved by the Board of Education on June 8th. This MOA is the baseball softball infield project to improve the infield at Ann Hutch. And the agreement states that the district would purchase the clay necessary to fix the infield. And Eastchester Little League will take care of the rest. They will pay for the rest. They will do all the work. And the MOA stated that the project would begin within 72 hours of the approval by the Board of Education. And that was on June 8th. And as of yesterday, the clay has still not been purchased. So there's been no work done to this field. And therefore the, the, the girls' softball, which uses that field have not been able to use it. And the final point that I would like to make is that girls' softball has exploded in our community. We have a lot of students here who are playing softball and are very passionate about the sport. And these girls are good. The tenure team just won the district championship. They went to the sectionals, which hasn't been done in a very long time. Now, the boys' modified baseball team plays at Saginaw, which is an excellent, well-maintained, state-of-the-art field. The girls' modified softball team plays at Ann Hutch. And what kind of message are we sending to the girls that the boys get to play on this? One of the best fields in Westchester. And our girls have a field where the grass is not even being mowed. And there's weeds everywhere. And there's grass on the infield. And right now it's not even playable. I think this has been an issue for many years and we, we have this MOA with Eastchester Little League. And, and the girls deserve to play on a field that is just as good as the boys. And I think we need to show the girls that we value them equally. And we don't even have to do the work. We don't even have to pay for it. Eastchester Little League is willing to do it. So my questions are, number one, why isn't the field being maintained? Why isn't at a minimum the grass being cut? What is the plan for the rocks and the weeds? Because it is a safety issue. And also, why hasn't the clay been bought and the work begun on the infield?
Since this came up, you know, with Lisa Santill, she may have more that she wants to add. She really has to be working with Ed Kier, our facilities director, to get deeper answers into some of this. But I can tell you, as I shared with you in the email that I sent, you know, back, that there are some different pieces to this. There's a maintenance, let's just take the maintenance piece from, from the beginning, right? Keeping up with the regular maintenance on, on, on our sites is not an easy task, especially when it rains a lot and the grass grows. And we're down people and we're having a hard time replacing them. So right now we're down two or three people. And that's, you know, we're having a labor shortage at a time, as I described in the summer, when you're really trying to turn around a lot of projects and a lot of maintenance projects. So you know, the, the grass is going to get long at times and you will see it happen at various times. You have to prioritize and triage where you're going to put your priority. And sometimes you're, you're, you know, the, the, the fields are, you can make the ground, all the grounds look beautiful all the time, but that comes at a cost. You'd have to hire more people to get that done. So, you know, I, I don't have a, personally have a problem with occasionally grasping a little bit long here or there. So that the maintenance on the field itself, if you think about that field, now we can transition a little bit to the, to that, to the, the material in the back. I mean, that's been here since before I was here. That was, I, I know less about that. I think I investigated that when I first got started. And if Lisa knows more, you can, you can share, or maybe we need to see what the status is. That was removed due to some situation, I believe, on the high school and that, that land was relocated to that as a holding place. Just to be left there until it can be repurposed where it needs to be. And I believe there's some engineering work and other site work that has to be done in order for that to be put back where it belongs. So it does need to be attended to. It's just a matter of where it falls on the priority list. There's, with regards to the agreement, we have not, you know, I was part of, I was intimately involved in the first agreement here on this high school field. So I know all the persons and the process a little bit and how it works. And what that interface is like. You are dealing with, and I also know that there in that case, to kind of get all that to happen, there was a lot of communication and there was a lot of, hey, I need the district to do this and I need, I need to schedule, you know, this person to do this work. And there was just a lot of very intricate communication there. So my sense is, is that I would have to look and understand more about where that process has gone. And I will tell you, in this process, no one was shy about calling me and saying, hey, you know, we, we've got to get this moving. I need to communicate to your staff that we need the cooperation in order to get this done. And we would get that done. But I have not had a single phone call. Nor has, has Lisa that has said, hey, we're not getting cooperation from the district. So it begs the question, we've got to find out more about, was there some mutual agreement not to commence in three days after? Because if that was the intention, it's possible that any number of factors could have delayed that. And then there may have been some reason why, you know, it's also possible that there could have been a colossal breakdown on someone's. I'm not denying that or, you know, trying to be defensive. I'm just saying, I don't know yet. And I need to figure that out. It could be any number of, any number of things. We'll, we'll try to get, we will get that answer to you. We'll figure that out. But we expect that that work's going to be done if and when it can be done. And in, in terms of the grass growing on the field, if you're going to redo the field, yeah, you're not going to probably touch that grass until you do the work permanently. But as I said, most of our fields, if you go on any of the soccer fields, there, there tends to be unevenness. There tends to be work and maintenance that needs to be done beyond cutting the grass. And most of that work requires an investment of, of time and money to, to bring it up to a better standard. And so those are things that we do need to do. I think our grounds on our elementary schools could be great, could be vastly improved, all of them. And it is something that we have to make a commitment to do. I will say that we put million, at least a million, five to $2 million a year into our facilities because we're playing such colossal, colossal catch-up with all of our buildings. We're probably 80 to $100 million behind what we need, right? So the roof work that was done this summer, that work was where that money went. And so you can ask the question, should more of that gone into, you know, fields? I think that's a fair question, but I think right now we've been prioritizing what are the highest needs on the list? Infrastructure-wise. And all of this stuff does need to be attended to. So I'll have to look into the status of the the dirt in the back. I'll have to look, I'll look at the status of the agreement, what needs to be done there. But I'm going to defend a little bit the maintenance because I do think that in terms of the, the grass cutting, kind of the general maintenance, I think that's been done to a pretty good standard most of the time. Given the fact that we're down a lot of people and we're, we're not staffed heavily. One of the things, again, I'll, I'll conclude with this, that I've been a little bit a little bit surprised by is the amount of, the amount of catch-up that this district has to play in infrastructure. It is, it is significant and it, it then comes back to get you in many ways. And this can be some of them, you know, because you have to then, you're just, you're just playing a catch-up all the time and certain things fall to the wayside because you can't get down them with personnel or you can't get to them with money as easily as you'd like. So I don't know if that helps you, but I appreciate you bringing it up.
I, I do just want to mention, you know, the agreement.
Let's, let's just make sure, you know, we've got a timeline. Let's make sure the timeline happens. There's just a lot of resources in this community that are willing to help us out, especially when it involves stuff, you know, the benefits in part of the community, which is the use of our facilities.
I just also want to clarify, I, I know that the district can't afford to, you know, fix every field. But according to this MOA, I believe the only cost to the district was the clay. And everything else, Eastchester Little League is doing. They're doing the labor, they're doing, they're buying everything. So it really is not costing the district.
Yeah. And I want to note that I don't separating that out is, yes, that's, there are no obstacles other than whatever we learn about scheduling or, you know, conditions that, you know, there's always a story under this and we need to understand what that is. But separating that out in my mind was the issue of, you know, improvement of other parts of the field, you know, and so you kind of have in my mind, three things, general maintenance, improvement that doesn't have any allocated resource and then improvement that is scheduled and has resource. And I'm making a distinction there clearly. So I wanted to make, you know, you to know that that was my intent there.
Myself here. I remembered you. It's not. Let's hope also that we could take something like this, which, you know, we've done it at the softball field. Now we're going to do it Hutch. And, you know, maybe we could use it as a model to get some other fields fixed, you know? The soccer field at Greenville has been in terrible shape since the beginning. It's very bumpy and, and, you know, maybe there's things we can do with the soccer league to improve that one as well. Maybe we could get the town involved. If we don't have particular equipment that they have equipment from, that they use at Lake Isle that can get used down. You know, there's so many things that we can do that obviously money's an issue, but sometimes it's not, it's not always the money. It's just talking to people and getting stuff, getting people the willingness to get behind it and do it. So let's try to encourage that rather than discourage that. So, yes. Is this on the same subject or a new subject? Same subject?
Okay, I just wanted to comment on, I guess the priorities in which Dr. Glass, you said around, there's maintenance, there's projects that are paid for. And then I forget the third one that you mentioned, but I guess in this case, it's, it's a bit, it saddens me that we had a contract that was signed back in early June. And it was stipulated in there, you know, within 72 hours that there would be some movement on it. So I guess my question is, you know, who, who's going to be the project leader internally to make sure that this stays on track, the timelines, and this actually happens? And then I guess the second point I wanted to make is around maintenance. I mean, it just seems like we've always had an issue with high grass all over the district. And even, I'll go back to Kayla's Corner at Greenville where, you know, that, that has sadly has not been maintained either. So, you know, what is the plan to just keep general maintenance going? You know, who, whose responsibility is that? And I guess how do we prioritize that on a regular basis and then keep on top of that?
Now I'm going to sound a little defensive, okay? But I'm just going to be upfront about it. Because I, I am entitled to, to have, you know, thoughts and feelings and opinions about and reactions to what your perceptions are. And what I would suggest is that the, the, there are factors, if you get into this, what you just, what you learn, just because that that agreement said that, that work should convince, that may have well have been the intent. And there probably were some very good reasons why that didn't occur. Lisa, you know, pointed out a few of those. So we need to understand that and then we need to evaluate. Was there, was there a breakdown or was there not? And I'm open if there was to owning that and figuring out where that breakdown was and trying to correct. But I also don't want to assume that there was a breakdown because it could, what I've, what I have learned through, through watching this field and through other projects, is particularly outdoor projects are subject to a lot of conditions. So I don't know where it could have, there could have been setbacks where people sat down and agreed and said, oh, you know, we can't do that because of the use of the field or because of the weather or the availability of clay. Or any number of things. And I, and I just don't want to, it's a fair question, right? But I also don't want to just the default assumption be that we defaulted on agreement or we didn't, we didn't live up to our, under the bargain or the district somehow dragged its feet. If, if that indeed is what happened, I'll be the first to own it. I'll be the first to try to correct it. So will Lisa and so will everybody. So the project leader on this would be Ed Kier, would, would be the, I think Ed would designate the, the head grounds person, Eric, to, to work on that. And then Lisa helps follow up on any, anything else, any support that's needed. And the next piece, I guess I want to talk about is just general maintenance. And again, I apologize if I sound defensive. I, I typically don't like to be and I certainly don't want to be perceived as that. But you know, in the short time that our, our facilities director has been here, there've been quantum leaps in improvement in the maintenance of the facilities. And those, those of you who are around here, And those, those of you who are around here will attest, just in the time that I've seen in, in the morale in the department, in the resources and training provided in that department. You talk to those employees and they will tell you that, my goodness, we're on a good trajectory and a good track and we have good support. And I have to credit Lisa and Ed for bringing in Ed and, and the two of them leading the charge to make that improvement. I'll stand behind that. So, yeah, can it be better? And are there areas where, you know, even I'll look around and say, oh geez, we need to get attention here because, you know, the grass is getting a little long. It generally has a story and if it's addressed, if I bring it up, it gets addressed. So, and the reason I'm, I'm, I'm a little defensive is because I'm proud, truly proud of the improvement that's been made and that's all one can do. I, I don't know how it could be improving any faster or any better. And so, you know, if there's room for improvement, we'll, we'll own it. I just, again, I want to be careful, especially here in front of the public and everyone, to make sure we don't have any perceptions that are, you know, if we're going to form perceptions or whatever, we have to make sure that we leave room for the unknown and the things that we don't know behind the story, whether it's about an agreement or whether it's about general maintenance. But I will say I'm very happy with the general maintenance in the district and will stand behind it. Although, you know, I'm sure there is where areas for growth there too. So forgive me if I'm defensive, I, I try not to be that way, but I want to be clear, you know, about how I feel about where we stand in these things and the, in the importance of getting the whole story.
I, I just want to say that I certainly understand if there were some issues of, of weather or activities. I think it's just because it's been three months and also because, because the girls use that field and we're planning on using that field for the fall. And they've missed time, I guess is what I'm saying, is that I, I think they were hoping that it would be done over the summer so that they could use the field and now sports have started. And so I think that was just the frustration.
And, and I applaud your, that lens that you put on that. I think that's vitally important and that equity component is huge. And, you know, again, I think, I regret to all of that and I, and I, I just, I want to understand really what happened.
Yeah.
Okay, and I also feel to think that what, it's been June, most of June, July, August, it's been, let's say, three months. In, in the scope, in the scope of the weather and all that's going on in the summer, I don't know that that's, I don't consider that necessarily a huge setback, but maybe it is. You know, maybe it is because it kind of depends on what the mindset was around that agreement, whether there was a push to try to get the girls on there and, you know, versus anybody else who may be permitted to use it and all of that. That's why the story is always really important to me. But thank you for, I'll applaud that, that you standing on that, on that disappointment that, that is there and especially for any particular group. So thank you.
Okay, next, next subject, Jonah, you had a question on something.
I have two questions about quarantine. Did you say that six students were quarantined because of a lunchtime exposure? Did I hear that right?
Believe that's the case, I could be slightly inaccurate, but I believe I'm accurate.
So, so I know we've gone to great lengths to make a number of spaces available, get the tents, seating arrangements, et cetera. And I think the plan said they were going to have six feet or close to six feet between students at lunch. So there wouldn't be quarantines. I'm trying to understand how seven students are within six feet of each other at lunch if, if we're going through all that.
Yeah, our intention was to try to get to six feet, but in some of our buildings it was very difficult to do so because of the space available. So three is what I've been saying is if you look in the update, in the, in the chart that I put together, in our elementaries, we're, we're, we're going for three to six and it's weather dependent. So we've had, like on the first day of school, for example, we couldn't go outside and, and eat. The tents that we put up are not enough swing space to assure six feet, even if you use them fully for lunch at some of our schools. So on, on good days where you can go outside, you know, you, you're going to probably be closer to six feet in some places. Maybe not always, it may vary a little bit by classroom. We, it, it also is somewhat dependent on staffing because in some of our elementary schools, if you had enough monitors, you could use hallway spaces with carpet squares and eat there. And that was part of the plan in some of them on some inclement weather days to get more space. But one of our schools in particular, we, all over the district, we don't have enough monitors. We cannot secure them, they're not coming, they're not applying. And so you need extra monitors to be able to have, you know, instead of having one monitor in a large area or in a classroom, you've got to have one in the classroom and one in the hallway supervising several people. So there's another monitor and that plays out down many hallways. So we are not going to be able to get to six feet in all cases. And I've been very clear about that and I would love to, but I'm just not going to be able to. So we're doing the best we can. In that one case, when they mapped out, the principal and head custodian went back out and they have maps for where everybody sits. And they figured out where everybody sat and could that be improved? They found a way to make some small improvements. So you might've only had four in the next iteration instead of six. But they're, they're dealing with a lot of constraints right now. And yes, you will have quarantines at lunch. If they happen, they're going to happen at lunch and I will not guarantee six feet across the district. I cannot, if I could, I would. Well, when they do the contact tracing and they do that in conjunction with, with guidance from health department, I believe. They have to, they have to figure out where people were. In that case, it was, you know, because I think there might've been something in that circumstance wherever they were, where, you know, in a three hundred and sixty degree pattern, there might've been somebody at another table or something. And so they, they tried to find a way to, I applaud them for saying, wow, we lost six. That seems like kind of a lot, what happened here? Is there any way we could arrange this differently so we would have lost maybe five or four cases to quarantine? So they were able to make some small improvements just in the way that the furniture was arranged in the room. But that, yeah, that's a pretty high number. It's probably the uppermost limit of what you're in a situation like that.
I know there was some brainstorming that we all did about, you know, maybe some sort of musical chairs slash seating arrangement.
Yeah, it's easier to do with the older children to try to encourage them to be clear to migrate. But the younger ones, it's hard to get them to move that fast. Reliably move.
Situations where we can't have at least, you know.
You know, they're in the moment, they're in the day. The student are young and they're eating lunch and, you know, they're not thinking about quarantining, right? And our staff might be, but, you know, I don't think that they can guarantee or even partially ensure that they can, they can monitor the amount of time and have students, you know, move around to meet it. But I, I'm very confident that everybody's working really hard to do the best they can with the space they have. And even, even looking at every opportunity to learn and improve, if they missed an opportunity to improve, to try to improve it further. And that's, you know, that's what I expected, what I, what I can ask for them. I'm going to defer to Dr. Erso, she was, you know, we had a conversation.
Are we still requiring that sibling quarantining while they're awaiting their sister's test results? And if so, why?
Nearby districts to see what they were doing. And it's, it's kind of split, you know, half are and half are not quarantining. Having siblings stay home while the other family members testing. So our medical director is still, believes that it is, you know, the safest and best thing for our students and consistent with some of the CDC guidelines. I don't know of any New York State guidelines or Department of Health guidelines that require it though. So in some ways, I think it's the district.
I, I was going to jump on your question before, so I'll, I'll make a statement which doesn't answer your question. But I'll make the statement. Would I like to see a still? It's track every child that is quarantined in this district. And then at each board meeting going forward, report, so far we've tracked, we've, we've quarantined six children for a total of fifty-six days. None of them tested positive. Next board meeting, we cumulatively, next board meeting, we come back and we say, we're up to forty children, a total of two hundred days, zero positive tests. And the next board meeting, we've, we've got three hundred kids and we've quarantined them, you know, five hundred and fifty days and we had three positive tests. Because, you know, everybody says follow the science, follow the data, okay? Without data, you can't argue anything, okay? Right now, Jonah, I would agree with you, you might be too premature for that. But if we could build that case and show that we're quarantining all these kids, keeping all these kids home and it's having no health benefit whatsoever, I will personally call the governor's office every day till they change the rule. I understand that, but, but to change policy, what I'm suggesting is I think we need some data. Yeah, we could join the half of the districts that aren't doing it or we could be one of the half that are doing it. But that's, you know, I kind of feel like you do, but I don't want to do it without some data behind it. You know what I'm saying? So I, I'm willing to, you know, obviously, thank you for unmuting me, whoever did. I'm willing to listen to other people's opinions on that, but I really do want to see some hard data. I, I want us to monitor this thing and I don't want to guess at it. Because like I said, I'll call the governor's office every day if I have one, I'll call it twice a day, okay? And I'll call our state representatives every day. Because if we're, if we're enforcing policies to keep kids out of school, okay? That aren't having a benefit to, to the public health, I think that's spinning on wheels. That's my opinion, so.
Yeah, I'm not talking about any policies and I think, you know, we both understand that. I, you know, I, right now, I, I would say burden should be.
Right, I mean, Dr. Erso said that the medical director said it seems to be based in CDC guidance, even though it's not part of the law. I, I certainly trust, and I know you have expressed that there's concerns that you have, but I certainly trust the judgment of a medical professional as to interpreting CDC guidance better than. Okay, well, that's a fair question. If that's, if that's the case, I would like to know, you know, I think it would be worth asking Dr. Collins for clarification on that. But, but in other words, you have no medical background, I have no medical background. I have no way to say whether that's more or less accurate or safe than, than Dr. Collins, but Dr. Collins has a medical background, right? She's on the front lines of this. I have other doctors that I've communicated with who are on the front lines of this that have expressed. And we're only asking them to be quarantined with their sibling until they test negative, right? They're not quarantined for the entire time. Okay, but what's the alternative?
I don't necessarily object to the idea of changing the policy, but I think I would object to changing the policy arbitrarily because of our feelings. I think I agree with Vito that we need some data. We need something to lean on to say, this is why we're changing it, right? Well, the, so, so you're asking for a change in policy, right? So we have a policy that has been in place for a while for whatever reasons that they were instituted. So to change that policy, as you said, the, the owner should be on whoever wants to institute a policy. We were asking us to change. Why do we make the change? Is it arbitrary or is there a reason behind it? And I think Vito had a great idea because if we have information that says, I know what, we're doing this and it turns out every time we've done this, it's made no difference. And that's a good thing to lean on to say, hey, this is why we're making the change. As opposed to, we may find out, well, actually, you know, it did impact in this case or that case. It's something that we wouldn't want to. But having that information, I think, is important as opposed to making arbitrary changes. Simply because we've heard that some districts are doing one way, some are doing it the other. I like the idea of having information so that we're making an informed decision and not an arbitrary decision. I mean, it's, it's day three of school, I mean, right? How many quarantines and siblings are out because of this? I mean, you have to have some data, right? You have to have some time. I don't think saying on day three, it's been two weeks since I brought it up, but there's been no time to collect data.
Several weeks since we raised this. We've not made any kind of headway. How many weeks of data are we going to need before we change the policy? And how many kids are going to have to stay home?
Do we have data on the amount of children that were quarantined? How many tested positive and do we have data on the siblings?
I'm not answering that question, but I would say last year is different than this year because last year's virus was different than this year's virus. So any data you have from last year doesn't necessarily flow forward to this year. What we're dealing with now is something that's less deadly but more contagious. But I'd like to add to my request on accumulating this data. To Jonah's point, you know, kids that are exposed at lunch that are quarantined should be in one data set. Kids that are quarantined because their siblings were exposed should be in a separate data set. And we could. I understand that, I want to, I want to, I want to track that data as well, Jonah. And I, I think you could probably determine something pretty quickly and, you know, quickly in this sense is, as who said, Steve just said, on the third or fourth day of school here, you know, I'm not saying we're going to have an answer next week, but I, I think we could determine pretty quickly when we start getting the results of all of those tests, what the results of our quarantines are. Believe me, it's the whole board does not want kids home, okay? We all want the kids in the classroom, we all agree on that. We all want them in there as long as possible and we want them in there at home as short as possible. So, you know, I, I, and I want to hear from everybody, but I think we need some data. How much data? I honestly don't know, I don't know, but, you know, let's.
By next meeting, we'll make a determination.
I think next meeting, I'd like to see the data for sure. And then we could have this same discussion and then we could argue about whether we have enough data or what the data says. But absolutely, I'd like to set that goal of, we have some data by the next meeting. So somebody else wanted to say something. This is a bad layout for watching hands go up.
I just wanted to add one other point, which is the concern is, right? If the sibling or the stu, the student who was the quarantine that had the sibling, right? If they test positive and the sibling was not quarantined also, then the risk is you've now created a situation where you've kept more students of them, right? The sibling exposed, you know, seven other students at lunch. So that's, you know, there, there's two sides to this and I don't think we can sort of arbitrarily to, to, I don't know who said it, just decide, hey, it's going to be better if we do it this way. I think data is the answer and I, and I agree, I'd like to see us collect that data and understand exactly what, 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 what the best course of action is.
Want to say something else or let's say for the next meeting, we'll review the data, see where we stand? Yes, Captain.
So I think the reason that some parents feel very strongly about this and maybe why some of us feel strongly about this is, are the reasons maybe that children may be sent home that are not clearly for a communicable sort of illness. So like if they're sent home for a really non-specific sign of COVID, like headache or stomach ache, and I think a lot of parents would know. and I think a lot of parents would know maybe why their child has a headache or stomach ache for whatever reason, I think that's really where the strong feeling comes from, that then it seems a little silly to keep a sibling home for that reason, if it's for one of those very non-specific. Obviously, if the child is coughing and sneezing and fever, I don't think any parent would say, well, I'm just gonna send the sibling in no matter what. I think it's just like such a range of, of symptoms. I think that's where a lot of that comes from.
Couldn't agree more, and I think nobody's gonna argue that point. We all want, we all don't want kids in school sniffling and sneezing and coughing and, and spreading a germ of any kind, okay? But we also don't want their brother or sister going, you know, being kept home because the sibling is sneezing and coughing, so.
Can I just?
I guess, I'm sorry, yes.
So, if you're looking for data, I mean, I can certainly ask the nurses to give data. I'm just, I'm just thinking that two weeks of data, I don't know, would be really very reliable or really provide a lot of information, because, you know, it's, it's students that are sent home that have, that are being tested, who are not ill, and, you know, to your point, they're not, they're ill, but they're not sick with COVID, they're not diagnosed with COVID. So, I'd have to, you know, have the nurses, you know, provide that information and then, you know, follow up to see if, you know, that student ended up testing positive and then anyone else in the family tested positive. So I don't know that two weeks would really be enough time to really give you reliable information. So I just wanted to, you know, throw that out. And also, I just do have to say that even since the start of the year, that there have been positive cases that have been through families. So it is something when a student or a family member does test positive, it's going through families pretty quickly. So, yeah, I'm just throwing that out. I'm not saying, you know, to, to keep kids home or not keep kids home, you know, that's a board's decision, but it is something that is already going through families. And some of the cases so far this year have been multiple family members.
Vito, okay. This is a discussion that we're gonna continue to have as we, as we continue to meet. We're gonna get more data, we're gonna look at it, and we're gonna keep evaluating it, and we'll see what happens. But our goal is to keep kids in school. So. Now, going back to the original, we had questions on Dr. Glass, because I think that's where we were on his presentation. Jonah was next, and then I think Steve already went, I think, Judah, did you have one, or did we finish with yours as well?
You know, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot more time on operational things, so I will just say, I'm grateful that we got the tents, because I know that was a question. I'm also grateful you sort of answered one of the questions I was gonna ask you, which is, if the weather is not conducive and we're staying inside, how are we accommodating that, and you answered that. But I have heard some, I don't know if it's rumblings is the right word, about situations where there's not enough capacity in the tents for the kids to actually be able to eat at the tables. I don't know the veracity of that or the details of that, I imagine it's something we're working on. So I would simply request that you make sure that we know if there's not enough tables and chairs for the kids to fit under the tents, that we, you know, that's something that hopefully we can fix in short order. So that's the only comment I'll make.
And I'll just let you know, from my understanding, it's probably not lack of tables and chairs. I think we have a lot of them. I think it's, you know, just the square footage. The tents have a limit of four hundred square feet per, without having to be permitted. And that's a twenty by twenty tent, so that's what we have. So we've got two of them, and, you know, when you start stringing more than, you know, two or three of them together, you know, you're, you're at the spot where they would suggest you start to permit for a larger tent. And they have to, they're supposed to be a certain distance apart and everything, so, you know. So we actually went through that analysis in the tents, and we just, the cost to permit and rent a tent turned out to be probably doubled than what we ended up paying, what we ended up paying was significant, because these are tents that can withstand a hundred and twenty mile an hour winds, they're of the same quality of a permitted one, but we didn't need the permits because we kept within the four hundred square feet. So, yeah, we are, they are a little bit limiting in terms of size, we just had to work within those parameters.
Okay, just like I said, I didn't want to belabor it and spend a lot of time on an operational thing, I just wanted to let you know I'm here.
Okay, I guess, I guess we'll move along to the next agenda discussion item. Is the discussion on timeline fulfilling the vacant seat on the board. For those who don't know, trustee Rob Summer has sold his house and moved out of the district and tendered his resignation as of August twenty-seventh. So now there's a seat open on the Board of Education. And what the board is asking is that anyone who is interested in applying for that seat should send a, well, this is the proposal we're talking about, should send in a resume with a letter of interest to the district clerk, and we've set a preliminary deadline of that for September twenty-eighth. And with the goal of appointing a person to fill the remainder of that seat until the next election day, which we would do at our October twenty-sixth meeting. So we have to, as a board, decide on some dates to, the applications are doing on the twenty-eighth. We would schedule a few special, let me, let me see, hold on. We would schedule some special workshop meetings in the district office to interview candidates at a time that we have to decide right now, hopefully, sometime in October, so that we can have a, an executive session, hopefully, on October nineteenth, if everybody can make that day, to select a candidate, and we would appoint at our October twenty-sixth meeting. So I'm gonna open this up for comments from the board here, let's talk about the dates. Did I work for everybody? Was anybody out of town? I know, I know Judah is gonna be out of town some of those days, so we could work around that. But we want to have, you know, we want to have eight of us there, if we, if we can manage that, so. I'll throw it out. I had originally suggested interviews for October twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, so let's start there. So, Judah, I think you had a problem with one of those days or someone else. Everyone just raise your hand, let me know, okay? Look at your calendars, open your phones, we're not, you know, we're not checking Facebook. Everything's on my calendar, so I'm gonna look at mine.
Well, we had, Dr. Glass shared a scheduling calendar, and it looked like of those three dates that you had suggested, only one date was working for even a quorum of the current boards, and that was the fourteen.
That means we have to change those dates, obviously.
We have to change those dates, so, you know, we might need to, you know, stretch the timeline just a little bit. The, you know, and I think that we might want to remain open to that, extending the deadline.
We can go earlier than that, too. We can go before, because October eleventh is a Monday, that's Columbus Day. October fourth is the Monday before that, so we could look at any time in the week of October fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh. Okay? So why don't, why don't we, October four, five, six, or seven? How many people can, let's, Tuesday's the fifth, we always use Tuesdays. So why don't we say, how many people could make Tuesday, October fifth? Go ahead, Steve.
So, I don't have my work calendar here, so I can't really tell you when I can or can't. Can we, can I suggest that we do the scheduling offline and then an email is sent out to?
Yeah, we could absolutely do that, yeah, I mean, we're basically telling the public how we're doing the process. So what day we meet and interview people is only required because a work session is a public meeting, so we have to post that we're meeting for a work session to interview someone. But is, is everyone okay looking at those four days, and rather than the following week? Yes, no? We'll do another one of those Google poll things, on what day are you available? You know, I, I love PTA meetings, but. I, they would understand, you know, we're interviewing a candidate, that's much more important than, I know it's, might not sound right, but it's more important than being at a PTA meeting.
Is it October fourth week this time?
Yeah, what, what, you seem pretty strongly committed to swearing the new person in by October, or would you say?
That's just the next regular.
Right.
Meeting, after we accept applications, interview people.
But there's no compelling, okay, it's not like there's a deadline for some specific.
Push it off to the November sixth meeting, whatever that date is.
And I'm, listen, I, I'm a strong believer of you set a date, you have a target, but I'm also thinking, in this case, if we can't make it work, we can't make it work.
Want to try to do it as early as possible, the earliest we could really do it is appointed October twenty-eighth. If that doesn't work, we push it off to the work session, which is the next.
I, I think the key thing also is, is that we need to make sure that the public is aware that they need to get their applications in by September twenty.
We're gonna hold to September twenty.
I think that's a key thing, because that, that doesn't, right? So I think we need to make that announcement.
Yeah, can we get that?
Unless anybody has an objection.
Everyone's okay with that, right? Application's gotta be in by the twenty eighth.
Well, I think that's two weeks from today, I think that's a little quick. I think it would be good to give more time, that's just my.
I, I don't, I don't see.
That's just my opinion.
I, I respect your opinion. You agree it's too, too quick? All right, I'm okay. We push it back a few days, October, let's see, let's see, let's see. What's the, what's the day after that? October, help me out here, guys. What did I say, twenty eighth? No, how about by Monday, close of business Monday, October fourth? How's that work? That's one day short of three weeks from today. Does that work for everybody? All right, no objections. All right, applications have to be in October fourth, close of business to the district clerk. Okay? And then Lori will let us know, probably the day after, how many applicants we have. Then we could figure out how many days we need to interview. You get two applicants, three, four applicants, we do it one night. We get seventeen applicants, we're gonna be doing it for a week.
Yeah, I think realistically, we probably can't even really commit to the schedule of the interviewing until.
No, we can't, until we know how many applicants we have.
Right.
Okay?
But I think picking a day for a first set makes sense.
Not, yeah, we'll, we'll determine how many applicants we have on October fifth, and then we'll schedule the meetings as quickly as we can after that. And, and we also have to find out what nights the applicants can meet with us, you know, because we're not gonna exclude someone if they're, you know, going to a World Series game or something like that. Well. The following week is the week we had problems with some. Nineteenth? I thought you said someone couldn't make that.
I, I have a potential conflict that may be in Houston, but I'll, I'll manage right.
You know what? Cheryl, we'll go with the plan, we'll put out a calendar tomorrow with all the days after that, and we'll figure out the first day everybody can make it.
I've got a quick question. Actually, I have a request and then a question. Dr. Glass, my request would be that on the, the email that goes out to the public with the information on how to apply, that there be a link to the NISBA website, there's some great material on the NISBA website. I don't want to link it directly to, there's like a what to expect, there's like a brochure, like what, what the role of a board member, or what to expect when you're on the board, that sort of thing.
You might not want to give them that, because maybe nobody will apply.
Well, at least they'll know what they're getting into beforehand, right? But the, the, and, and the question is, what happens if we get a hundred or ten applications? Are we, is the intent to interview everyone, or?
I would ask, I, I don't want to interview a hundred people, but, you know, I don't, I don't really expect that. But the answer to that is, let's see how many we get and see if it's a problem. You know, we've, in the past.
I just, I want to make sure that we.
In the past, we've had, like, eight, nine applicants, and we've interviewed them all, so. Usually, it's a lot less than that, but. We'll see, we'll see what comes up. So, all right, so we'll, we'll also put out a survey, Rob, starting, start with October sixth and seventh. Okay? Because the fifth is gonna be the day that we find out how many applicants we have. All right? Do the sixth, seventh, you know, leave off the holiday, and, yeah. I, I don't think we want to do Friday nights. You know what? We probably don't want to, but I think we should put them in there anyway, just in case that becomes the only night that everyone can make it. You know, I don't, I don't preferably want to do a Friday night, but it is what it is, we gotta do our jobs. So, enough discussion on that. And to all the thirty-something, I don't know, thirty-eight participants on Zoom, tell all your friends.
I, I just, I'd love to encourage people, if, if you're interested, if you think you have a different viewpoint or a different perspective, it's great community service, so, you know, I would encourage people to apply.
Absolutely, that's, let's encourage anybody that's interested, so. Of those, I'm gonna ask that on the personnel agenda, that the, the last item on the personnel agenda listed on the other be removed, that we vote on without that, because we're gonna table that for, for another meeting. So, move, if you can move the personnel agenda without that last item.
Yep.
And the special ed.
Sure. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the personnel agenda as attached, minus the item that Vito mentioned. And be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the placement as recommended by the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education.
Any discussion or anything on any, either of those two items? Okay, all in favor? That's everybody unanimous? Good. All right, Cheryl, would you like to do the next one, two, three, four, five items?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the revised corrective action plan related to the report on internal controls pertaining to the cybersecurity cycle as submitted by Narwaki Smith for the 2019-2020 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the contract with Aris Contracting Company, Inc. for construction manager services related to the capital construction pre-bond referendum in the estimated amount of $26,863. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the proposal for Mistrachi Mercedes-Cassius Architecture Engineering, PLLC, Mamassi, for architectural engineering services for the capital construction pre-bond referendum in the estimated amount of $29,661. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the instructional services agreement with the White Plains City School District for the 2021-2022 school year at an estimated cost of $14,000. And be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following tax or sheary settlements for the 2021-2022 school year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education approves the payment of corresponding tax or sheary judgment from the Reserve for Tax or Sheary if funds are available, as attached.
Jonah, would you like to second that? Sure, okay, anybody have any questions, comments? Judah first. first, Jonah second.
I've got two. Regarding the, the corrective action plan, that came about as a result of, I think, the audit, right? So do we have to resubmit something to the auditors, or is that what we're submitting? Or is it just until the next audit? Okay, that's good. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. And then we spent some time regarding the Mamassi and the architect contract. We spent some time a few years back doing some analysis on the safety and security. So can you speak at all? And maybe you're not prepared to go to a lot of detail, but we had some report. We've made some changes. Are we starting over with this? Or is this taking over from where we left off, or somewhere in between? Do you, does that make sense what I'm asking? So this actually may cover some of the stuff that's on Ed Kier's list, is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, good.
Okay, Jonah, you had a question?
Dude, actually, my first question, whether or not we're duplicating all the work that we did last time for the bond, that answer. My second question was on the student services agreement. The title of the agenda item says that it's made a cost of $14,000. The agreement says it's $14,000 per student. So is this just for one student, or is it, could we be spending $14,000?
This is just one student for this year and next year. It may be up to two.
This is just one student for this year and next year.
It's going to, it's going to be a yearly program that we're providing for students as transition services. And this year I identified one student to attend the program. And next year I would budget for probably up to two students to go.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? All right, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous as well. Now we're up to other business items, which we have the second reading and adoption of policy number, I can't read that, it's too small. Somebody help me out here. 2341 dot one. Okay, who would like to make that motion? Christie, I think you're up. You want to move that, that we adopt that policy? This is the consent agenda of policy.
Okay, let's see. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following after the first and the second reading of policy number 2341 dot one consent agenda as attached.
Thank you. This, this policy, the board has followed it in the past and got away from it a few years ago. But what it does is it allows us to take our certain agenda items and move them into one motion, so that a board member will move the consent agenda, which will include routine items such as the personnel agenda, the special ed appointments, recommendations, and certain other items that, that are routine. It comes into effect when you have a lot of items on the agenda. It saves us a lot of time. And it allows us to have more, you know, more beneficial discussions on other items that need discussions as approved, as opposed to the routine items that don't need discussion. So that's why we're doing it. We have to make it, we have to vote on it, and then it's going to be our policy. And as an example, today, we would have had the personnel agenda, the special ed placements, and probably several of those other items in the consent agenda as being routine items and all been moved at once. So, all right. Yes, Cheryl?
I just want to ask a question. And anything can be removed by, by, simply by requesting it. Any board member can remove anything from the consent agenda. And what is the timeline for that? Does that happen in the meeting, or does that happen prior to the meeting?
It can happen both. Okay, so when you get your agenda on, on Friday, you can contact the superintendent and have the item moved off the consent agenda and to be voted on separately. Sometimes there's items on the consent agenda that someone might have to abstain from. You might want to, you know, you're related to somebody who's being appointed a monitor on the personnel agenda, and you don't want to vote on that. You just have that removed. So, but you can do it up to the motion, right? Right? Just before it's voted on. So it, any time means any time. So.
I'm, I'm just, from a logistics standpoint, going to recommend that if someone is aware of a change to the consent agenda before they get to the meeting to do, make best efforts to let, you know, the clerk know that they can make that change before we get here, because it's a lot easier to manage.
If you're aware of something that you want moved prior to that, you can move anything, any person can move anything off the consent agenda for separate discussion. Okay? It's not something that you need to vote on or anything like that. So. Okay? All right. So we're all in favor, adopting the policy? Okay, good. That's unanimous as well. Now, I hate when I open up documents, because every time I try to go back in Zoom. So that's it for our agenda. So we're up to public comments. So anyone from, anyone here in the audience would like to come up and comment on any items? Obviously, you had your opportunity on the agenda, but any non-agenda items, please come up, state your name. Please hold the courtesy of three minutes, so that we can hear as many people who want to speak. So anybody interested in addressing the meeting? Going once? Yes. I'm sorry. Come on up. Make sure you hold the mic close, because I can't hear through the masks.
Make sure they can hear you.
Hello. Hello. Okay. Just wanted to make a comment after listening to the good debate. As a community member, I would support more data before we decide whether to revise the quarantine policy for siblings. Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Anybody else like to comment? Going once, going twice? Okay, we're finished with public comments. So any comments from the board, new business, before we, just comments from the board, not new business?
Steve? I just, I went to the Anne Hutch, am I, I went to the Anne Hutch Welcome Back Circus, and I thought they did a really good job. I'm sure the other schools did too, but unfortunately, I didn't get to see them. But, so I just wanted to, to, you know, commend the, the PTAs and the staff members and everyone who, anyone who was involved in setting those up. A nice thing for the kids, and it, you know, it kind of felt almost like a normal year. So.
That's the goal. Anybody else want to comment on anything? Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the football game. Did anybody attend the football game? Why don't you tell us about that, Christie? Because I understand that was quite moving.
Yes, it was great. Actually, I attended the varsity game, which I believe the team won like 35 to 10 or 15. It's really very good, a great way to kick off the season. And then the.
Pun intended?
What's that? No pun intended. And the JV team did the same. The stars were aligned. It was, I think it was 28 to, to 10, I believe, and against Nyack High School. So both, both teams are, are really starting off on, on the right foot, so to say. It was great.
All right, good. Thank you. Anybody else have a comment or anything before we close up? All right, I'm going to ask for a motion. We're going to move to a short executive session on personnel items. So Judah, Steve is second. All in favor? Okay, thank you, everybody for attending. Thank you, everybody who zoomed in. And we'll see you next time.